Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to meeting the November 24th Board of Commissioners Meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce Pat Kelly with the Church of Christ. He gave an opening prayer. Pat, good morning.
Our gracious heavenly Father, Father, we just thank you. We come into this time of year of Thanksgiving. Father, many people have been struck by this virus, our local community, as well as state and national. Father, we thank you for the medicines and different things that are on the horizon that will enable us to hopefully overcome this with your help, Father. Know that it is you that is working through this, and we thank you for that. We thank you that we can be here today, those who have gathered together here today to do the business of our community. We ask your blessing upon them as they try to work through the virus and other situations that they face and their own duties and everything of that nature, Father. Pray that it will go smoothly. We just thank you for the fact that we can be here. Thank you for our families. Thank you for all the blessings that we have. Help us not to be ungrateful, but to be thankful. Help us to be respective of one another and show kindness to one another as you would have us to show in our language, in our things that we do. Help one another.
Amen. Thank you, Pat. You too, buddy. Okay, everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from the November 10th meeting. Are there any changes or revisions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
A motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero. All right, good morning, Phil.
Good morning. Real quickly on 900 East updates. Project continues to move forward. We have one parcel that has not signed yet, but they do have the information in hand, and it looks like they are agreeable to sign, so that would be the last one for the project. I do have the contract here for the in lieu mitigation fees. If you recall, in Phase One, and then again in Phase Three, we built mitigation sites. Since that time, the state, working with the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers, has come up with a program where we would basically not be required to build a site, but pay money into a fund, and they go out and find a large site, construct it, and then they do the monitoring and so forth. You recall, our sites have, one of them has a five-year monitoring requirement, and the other one has a 10-year monitoring requirement. So by doing it this way, we basically pay our $39,504, and they handle it from there. NDOT will pick up 80% of the tab, and their portion will be $158,016. And again, our portion, our 20%, would be $39,504. I have a contract amendment here, the amendment number six of the original contract with NDOT for you for signature. It has some of this present grant explains the dollars that are being added to the... Again, please sign in blue, name, title, and...
Are there any questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor say aye. Motion passes two zero.
We are entering Stage Four on our plan set. It means that it's time to get the signatures that will go on the plans, the set of plans. You guys could sign and date this. They'll scan this in and use a digital copy, and they'll overlay this onto the plan.
Time, both of them?
Yes, please. Also, we had discussed partnering with the town of Odin and 900 East ahead to State Route 58 in order to open that bottleneck up, and also to create a better turning radius and things at the intersection. Lock Mueller has done a red flag survey and came back with dollar figures for that. Essentially, if we go from the park all the way north of the highway to corporate limits of the town, the price, the total cost of the project would be about $7,300,000. If we shorten it and just go just north of the highway, we cut that to about 6.7 million.
That's what I thought it was going to be.
Yeah. I anticipated it'd be 5 million, is what I thought it would be. That's about where construction came in. It was about 4.5.
Oh, we just go go to the highway.
Pardon?
Oh, we just go into the highway.
Right.
You're talking about going north of the highway?
Yeah. I mean, for another half million dollars, you can have the whole thing redone all the way up to the dentist office, which would include sidewalk on one side, pavement's not in great condition up through there anyway. And we're going to have, then we would have both sides of the highway, the intersection improved for the turning radiuses, and coming north or from the north or from the south, semis and such will be able to make the turn.
What's the total distance there? Is it under a mile, or?
I think it's, I think it's right out a mile, like 1.2.
That's not far, and then as far as, I mean, it's...
What we're getting into, Nathan, is we're in more of a town setting, so you've got to deal with more parcels. There's, there's as many parcels north of the highway as what there is in Phase Four altogether.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe six or seven dollars, six or seven million for a mile of road. Is the ROI going to be, I mean, if we spend our own money, would the ROI be worth it?
Right.
Obviously, grant money is sort of our own money, but is it cost efficient to get it moving forward?
I'd rather just go to the highway than Odin, about north of it.
Yeah, my, my argument's, I guess, similar, because I mean, if it's six, if it's six or 6.5 for a mile of road, is it, is it worth 5 million for a mile of road?
I know there's, there's many, many people complaining about that south piece. I also know, from our standpoint, in my mind, it's worth it simply to get the traffic off, the semi-traffic off of 800 North, because we got semi-traffic using 800 North to go eastbound to 231, and it's not a safe situation, the kind of money we're talking about here because of the geometry.
Yeah, but the...
Or about the hills.
Semis are going to go the shortest distance, so...
They tell me that they will use Canterbury Road if they can turn and go eastbound.
Yeah, I'm just not an optimist when it comes to, I don't, I'm assuming 800 North is, is the shortest distance, is my assumption, or else they, they'd find a way to turn that corner. I mean, I'm not against the project by any means, but it's obviously extremely costly, and my phone rings fairly often, and it's Denver never rang for that particular spot six years. And not to say it's not an issue, but I thought, yeah, I would have at least heard from the constituents that it was more of an issue than what it is.
We hear it a lot, from mostly farmers and truckers, because of the narrow pavement in Odin.
But even with that, I haven't heard it from the Highway Department. I haven't heard it from anybody in six...
What's the town's decision, or whatever?
They're, they're for the project. They think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to upgrade the road.
So the funding would be similar to the 900 East funding with the 80/20?
Right.
20 match?
Yeah, and we, we were thinking a 50/50 split. Michael's not here today, but we've met with the town of Odin, he and I did. We're considering a 50/50 match on the 20%.
Well, if we're, if we did move forward, I'd be more inclined to do the entire scratch for half a million dollars more, because otherwise, what are you going to do? All we're going to hear going forward is just that north piece. And I don't want to do a Phase 8.5, or whatever we're going to be up to for now. So if it was 7 million, just throwing out rough numbers, that's 1.4 million each, or 1.4 million, so 700,000 each.
Right.
And that funding would depend from, from where?
Well, it's up to you guys in the council. I would assume we would fund it from the same place that we've been funding 900 East from.
From our, our road funding?
From, from county match monies up into, and then construction from the H. We will need...
Would we put any sort of restrictions on 800 North?
Pardon?
Would we put any sort of restrictions on 800 North once we did that?
We certainly could.
That'd be the only thing I'd be comfortable with, because theoretically, if we do this and the traffic still stays on 800 North, we really haven't accomplished a whole lot.
I would agree.
Yeah, they're, they're going to go 800 North, especially concrete and then, but going to go out to, going to the town of Odin, they're going to go out there.
I can, I can tell you, if they, if they continue to do that, somebody will be killed out there, because that, that is not designed for semi-traffic with the buggies.
What about this? I mean, I'm definitely not against, I mean, I'm not a hard no by any means, but it would have to be contingent on 800 North, having limitations put on it, because if it is dangerous, if people are going to get killed, and if we do need traffic off of it, then now that cost of that 1.2 mile now makes a little bit more sense. If we get finished with that 1.2 miles and nothing changes on 800 North, then we've just wasted that money. So I'd want to make sure that the business owners in that area, in that Odin, are on board that says, if we do move forward with the 900 East extension, then here's the restrictions and limitations on 800, on 800 North that we would need to put in place.
Well, from the park to the highway, there's not that many individual places. Got some businesses that back off the road, but won't have them. We wouldn't go north.
There's not as many parcels in that area, no, you're correct.
Yeah, that's the way I had mine all the time, is highway.
I'm supportive of the overall concept, but I would be a hard no if there's no limitations on 800 North.
Okay. I, I will need a letter of support from the commissioners, as well as council on this, so I'll be going to the council meeting and asking for, basically having the same discussions what we're having here now.
And then the restrictions, obviously, I would rely on your recommendations. I don't have, obviously, any, any knowledge on what restrictions.
I would probably start with speed, and if that doesn't work, then we'll put a load limit on it.
I guess I, yeah, what I'm going to want to see is, basically, here's a list of all the possible restrictions that could be on 800 North. They need to have the mindset that all of these restrictions are going to be on 800 North, so they can make a knowledgeable decision that, that if they're able to use 800 North less, will 900 East really suffice their needs?
We just widened 800 North, didn't we, a couple of years ago?
We, we widened, but not...
For like a mile, from 1200 East?
Um, no.
Who did?
No, it's from, from 900 to 1100.
1100, yeah, yeah.
1200, it's 20 feet. That's not wide by any means. It was 18 prior to that.
Yeah, if we can divide, divert the traffic to 900 East, make 900 East safer, and they're okay with us diverting the traffic off 800 North, to me, it makes a lot more sense financially. If it's just going to be used as is, then that, that's a lot of money to have to be diverting away. Okay.
So, move forward?
Well, I guess my, now I'm just one, just one commissioner here, but I would want it, what I, here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to give them a list of stuff and say, look, this, or this, or this, or this might happen if we go to 900, if we do this. What I want to do is go to them and say, look, worst-case scenario, all these restrictions are going to be on 800 North. Make your decision based off the fact that 800 North will be limited to all, to all of these things. And are you okay with that? If they say, yeah, that's no problem at all, just throw all those in there, then perfect. Then when we implement all of them, then no one says, well, I thought it was just going to be one or two. You know what I mean? Because I don't want to be sitting here three years from now, having spent $7 million, and everyone screaming that they can't use 800 North. Because if we're doing it for safety, then it needs to be for safety. If we're doing it to give them two different routes, okay, that's fine, but to me, it's less valuable in that setting. So just put, what, worst-case scenario, what you think would be all the restrictions that we would need put in place?
I don't think it'll be restrict data, I don't know. Might be the semis, but concrete crap.
That's where you have Graver Post, JJ's, those folks that are using it.
It's a crying shame if they continue to use it after this project would be done, because I'm, I'm telling you, you know, we've spent $41 million on Canterbury Road for a truck route, a safe truck route for the community. That's by far the best scenario that they have to use to be able to save one or two minutes, or five minutes even, for trip. It's not making any sense to me, 800 North.
Yeah, I'm of the same mindset. If we're going to invest the money, then that needs to be the industrial corridor, and this is the more of the residential corridor. And I can go, I can move forward with that, with that mindset. So I would need to see what restrictions would be necessary on 800 North to make that a reality. And if Odin and all the businesses say, look, that's crazy, there's no way we're moving forward with that, fine, bring that back to us, and then maybe we missed something, or then, you know, we just need two votes. I mean, I'm just not...
Well, Graver Post and the concrete place would be going, they'd have to go clear to 50.
Correct, but they're, they're...
Back around to us.
They're, they're going eastbound, though, in Lagodi. They, they tell me the only reason that's shorter at all is because it misses one stoplight. If they turn and go north on 231, they miss that second stoplight. It's five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah. The overarching reason that we would do this is, is it would be a safety project. We would not spend $7 million to save a half a minute or 60 seconds of travel time. No one in their right mind would. So if it's a safety project, then it's got to be based off safety. And if we allow the same behaviors that are theoretically unsafe to continue, then it's no longer a safety project. I'm completely supportive of road improvement projects in the county. I'm supportive of moving forward with the concept, but I just want to make sure everyone realizes that there could be some negative consequences, and before we sign the dotted line, we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Okay.
So what I would need to see from you is that, a list of all the restrictions on 800 North that would have to take place to make it safe, in your opinion.
Okay.
Talk to Graver Post and see.
And, and then we'll obviously have to share that list with Graver Post and the folks up there, and just to get their feedback. And that way, we're at least all, we all have the same communication, the same information at the same time, where we can all make a collective decision on what's the best for the county up there.
Okay.
Feel that, there are 1200, green place, neighbors, not a green place up there somewhere.
Uh, 1200?
Email or something.
That's on, it's on, I'm sorry, 800 North and 1200 East, yes. Yeah, but most of their, well, I won't say, most of it, I believe, goes eastbound to the highway. That's not the area where the problem is at. The area, the problem on 800 North is between 1200 and 1,000. That's where the safety issue's at.
Right. Okay. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. I mean, I think it's a very worthy project to consider, so I appreciate all the information you've given us.
RTC permit, I have in hand, looking for permission to sign the permit. I don't see any issues with it. South of town, 250 South, 125 East, 150 South, Fountain View State, 75. South.
Yeah, it's great to see the...
Hit it on the phone, or email.
It's great to see the broadband expansion here.
Sign that on there.
So have we had, have we been able to reach out to RTC disregarding some of the safety of their subcontractors that they're using?
We, we have, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I've got, I've got their engineer's phone number. I've got the contractor that was out there. I've got his phone number now, so...
Okay, great.
24/7 contact information for both of them.
They won't be putting their boxes right along, by the blacktop, will they?
No. If they do, they'll move them.
Tom, any questions on the right-of-way?
Nope.
No? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to sign, have Phil sign the permit to utilize right-of-way by RTC?
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes two zero.
Okay, I also have one from Davies County Rural Water. This is on 500 South. They'd be boring under Sportsman's Road going down 500 South to the west, and then back south on, along 550 East to serve the new Turkey facility that's out there. I met with Donnie and the gentleman from the Turkey facility about a week ago, discussed placement, nickel agreement, so looking for permission to sign that as well.
Is this the same permit as the, oh, you got one there, okay.
Same area, I'm going to have one from Vectrum.
He might go in here. Any questions on the permit to utilize right-of-way by the Davies County Rural Water?
No questions.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes two zero.
And then again, I'd like to say, I didn't have this on the agenda, but it's a Vectrum permit to lay gas line going to the same facility. They would start over on the west side, come down along the existing paved road, the 500 East, I'm sorry, 550 East, and then southbound, down along 550 East until they get to Far Best property, then they would bore the road. I don't have a map from there.
But it's for the same property here?
It is.
Okay. Any questions, Tom?
Nope.
If not, an entertaining motion to approve?
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes two zero.
Project updates. You'd asked me to look into paving on 300 West by Maysville Church. I believe most of the pavement that's in bad shape out there is on the NDOT approaches. I've reached out to NDOT, and they told me they're going to take a look at it. There's also a culvert plugged up at the intersection that they've, I've asked them to ditch down along Old 50, the west, to open up. So I'll keep you informed how that goes. And 800 North, basically, the area that's coming apart, there's a hump that was left up there when we put our millings in several years ago. I was looking at undercutting that, taking that hump off and reprofiling it. Just depends on what the weather does here over the next few weeks, if we'll be able to do it or not, but to get it located, so. We're finished with, all the paving's finished, other than those two areas we just talked about, where you have a shoulder stone, or shoulder box rented, placing shoulder stone as we speak. Should finish Troy 150 South. They're moving to 450 South, and by Beale School, and from there, we're going to 100 North. That's finished probably next week, holidays, but we'll start on Sportsman's.
That intersection looks good.
Thank you.
Lightened it out good. They put the rock on there, but there's breaking out, breaking some on that outside.
Yep, Steve, Steve Osha, there was a semi that ran off there. He saw him do it, so...
Looks good.
Thank you. They've worked hard out there. I'm pretty proud of it. That 150 South between Casey's and Troy, it looks, it's 100%. It's like a million bucks compared to what it did, so.
Only they keep a commissioner off of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Oh, I do have one... Okay, I do have one other item. We were awarded bids last, at the last meeting. And somehow, um, item three, there's metal pipe, but there's also HDPE pipe. And I didn't have that on the list to award that. So I would like to, in addition to the, the bids that we awarded last meeting, go ahead and award the, uh, HDPE pipe, um, to Kent Incorporated. They were, they were the little bid.
Any questions, Dan?
Nope.
All right, I entertain a motion to award the bid for HDPE pipe to Kent Incorporated. Motion made by Commissioner McCracken?
Yeah.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes two zero.
I did send you the spreadsheet yesterday via email showing our income. We're down about eighty-three thousand, which is much better than what I anticipated. Of course, we are up, as you pointed out, with the buggy license plates.
Yeah, we're carrying your, we're picking up the slack for you.
There you go. I appreciate that.
I appreciate your help with, with, with the community out there. Yeah, your, your relationship with them obviously is extremely important. Doing a great job.
Thank, thank you. I try. Um, one thing I would like to go ahead and get permission to do, I have the money in the budget for this year. I would like to go ahead and, we, I'd stopped buying equipment until I saw what the funding was gonna be. But we still had a triaxle dump truck, a, uh, brush cutter, and a, uh, new trailer to haul our excavator on. In the budget, have money in there to buy those things. I'd like to go ahead and get the quotes or, or and or bids amount to get those things moving.
Now, order a new truck, a new truck?
Yeah, a triaxle, yeah.
Long as it do?
At the, yes.
Three, three jam?
I would, I would think we would just keep that one. We have so much problems with that thing. It's always broken down. Um, I would like to have it, just to keep it as a backup or potentially put, have extra people in the summer. We could put somebody in, in it.
On the, on the road.
Yeah, mow roadsides with it, yeah. Yeah.
Any questions on the new equipment, Tom?
Nope.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to proceed forward with the new equipment bids.
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes two zero.
Thank you.
Want you to get past this, uh, folks, fire us and stuff, insurance stuff. Three guys that you didn't replace, if you're gonna replace them?
Yeah, I'd like to next year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we are, I mean, it's, I, I do give hats off to our people. You know, it's been a, an extraordinary year. We've worked the entire time through COVID and up until just a few weeks ago, um, have remained pretty healthy. But, uh, we have had seven people off in the last fourteen days on quarantine.
Right, right when deer season hit. Imagine that.
Yeah. Try, we'll finish the paving too.
They can't see the sarcastic smile under this mask. I'm, I'm kidding, obviously.
It's never good when the highway supervisor is, uh, running the asphalt plant and running the paver.
Yeah, we need, we need, we need them back, like, quickly, yeah.
So.
Right. Yeah, it's been a great team effort out there. I tell you, it's, um, it's unseen by, by the community. But all they know is they're driving on pretty good roads and those roads don't just happen, so. Yeah, you and your team are doing, doing a great job.
Thank you. We, we have our Christmas lunch that we've had for, ever since I've been there. We're postponing that this year as well, so hopefully something in the spring, something in the spring. Sit down and be thankful together.
That'd be great. Be great. Okay, Phil, anything else, Tom?
Nope.
All right, thank, thank you, Phil. Have a great Thanksgiving. Okay, next up, we got the Bennington Levy Resolution. Uh, we should have all received a copy of this. Commissioner Myers was here previously, um, in case we had any questions. All the information's been reviewed. Uh, I'll have Grant go over the, the details.
And Tom Graham said he couldn't be here today, but he sent an email, uh, with the information that we'd asked for, just what they, what their schedule was of payback. It's a little bit different than this resolution. He said thirty-four thousand, three hundred is what they do. Steve said it doesn't matter if it's thirty-five thousand or thirty-four thousand, three hundred. I just, from our point of view, I wanted to know what, what the payback schedule was going to be before we agreed to this, this resolution. This has been presented before to both bodies and, um, I'm glad it's near done. The, have I read this before? Do you want me to go over it or just hit the highlights or what's your preference?
No, I think we're good. I think, I think just basically the, the payment terms, when it will be fully repaid, is just the general highlights.
Okay. So I don't know if you want this to reflect thirty-five thousand dollars a year, which it currently does, or thirty-five, thirty-four thousand, three hundred dollars per year. But other than that, um, it's the exact same as what Tom's, Tom Graham's email said that they could, they could do. They're overlaying, uh, multiple payments for the next couple of years until the initial, what he called, uh, VILWALK breach, um, until that's paid off. That's another couple, couple of years. So thirty-four thousand, three hundred, it'll take, uh, let's see, approximately six years to get that paid off. So, um, it would be the same at thirty-five thousand. And the first payment will be in twenty twenty-one. And we'll continue until it's paid off. Again, uh, they wanted to start paying when the earlier breach payments ended. But I explained to them that I, I felt like it wasn't appropriate to ask for the money and then start on payments years from now. And I think that they have agreed or their boards said that as much. So that's worth that, thirty-four thousand, three hundred, or thirty-five thousand, whatever you guys say. Starting in twenty twenty-one till it's paid off.
All right, thank you. I'd say for the sake of time and just hearing Steve Myers' comments earlier, just wanna keep it at thirty-five thousand. It's did not sound like the seven hundred was gonna be problematic to them, so. I know we've spent a lot of time, they've spent a lot of time on it, so I, I would suggest we just keep it at thirty-five thousand, just so we can sign the document as is today, but, um, I'm up to, whatever.
Either way, I was like at thirty-four, wondering what they had on the phone.
Is it a, can we sign this today and change it to thirty-four or would we need to have it back on a future agenda?
So, um, you can, I would make a motion, whatever your preference is. Uh, Steve, Steve's been very much about wanting to get it done. And I know he was here today and we told him that it wasn't necessary for him to say. He was fine with thirty-five thousand. And I know other board members have said they're fine with, with whatever, so.
And if we see there was any pushback, then we'll, we can address it then, so. If there's no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution as is in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars annually.
I kept motion?
A motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes two zero. Okay, next up, we got the RTC communication contract for the jail. Okay, so this is, um, all right, thank you. Okay, refresh my memories. Steve, you care, you care to step up to the podium? Thank you. Or chief deputy, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So the, the, refresh my memory again. What, what's this, the, uh, the contract before us for the RTC?
Please, this is the RTC contract that's been through commissioners and council, and it's ready now for the final signature so that, uh, you can proceed with that contract.
We're moving from AT&amp;T over to RTC?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. So this is for the phone, the actual phones, the actual devices. Okay, gotcha. Um, any questions, Tom?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the RTC communications contract in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and two dollars and eighty-five cents.
Prove it.
Motion made by Commissioner McCracken. I will second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes two zero.
Nathan, I might add that that contract is to be paid out of Riverboat.
And this will be funded out of Riverboat, um, as well.
So thank you.
Excellent, that was easy, right? Okay. Okay, next up, we got, um, SIDC COVID closeout. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning to you.
Uh, I'm Rex Knight with Southern Indiana Development Commission, standing in for Rhonda this morning. Um, apologize for my dress. I'm, I'm gonna be going out to a couple of job sites here in the city and, and afterwards to, uh,
Oh, no apologies.
Do some inspections, so.
You're fine, you're fine.
Um, we do have, first off, uh, closeout form number one, which I believe, my understanding was that you got those in advance, a copy of that to, to look through. And I think you have a couple of copies there, one for you guys to keep and the other for me to take back to Rhonda. This closeout is, uh, this close, closeout form is the initiation for closeout for your COVID grant, your first COVID grant that you had. So it's, it's a required document for getting that closeout started. So at this point, um, would ask for you to approve that and Nathan would be the one to sign it.
Okay. And this is for the, the initial, um, five thousand dollar grants that, that were, um, well, in your opinion, um, well, in your opinion?
Yeah, we're great.
Great. Uh, I apologize, yes, the podium is where the microphone's at. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
Yeah, uh, you might wanna pause that part for the actual public hearing and then that way I can capture that on, on the public hearing, but you can, you might wanna, you can say it now and then repeat it later.
Reiterate, sure.
Yeah.
Yes, um, so as you know, you know, our office, project manager did, a lot of the project admin for this specific program. We were originally funded a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as part of this phase one. Um, all hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been dispersed. Uh, Jill's been working very closely with Patty to get those checks through to those businesses that have applied. Um, in the initial application, we were able to fund up to thirty-two businesses across the county, all with under twenty employees. Uh, initially, we put a cap on thirty employees, making sure we targeted those, the smallest of the small businesses in Davies County, which, as we all know through the pandemic, were hurt the hardest in a lot of ways. Um, so we wanted to make sure to, to be, you know, uh, very focused on who were getting those funds. Now with this next grant that we have, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you have, we have opened up those parameters a bit to help, um, you still have to have under a hundred employees. That's the NOgra requirement. But trying to help some of those larger businesses in the county as well. So yes, this is for the initial hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions, Tom?
Nope.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to sign the closeout form number one.
Move.
This is three zero.
Two?
Two zero. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, moving on. Uh, well, we can go ahead and move to the public hearing?
And for the benefit of everyone here, uh, I do record this portion of the meeting. Uh, this is for minutes purposes. We have to provide minutes to the funding agency, which is the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. This is your second public hearing for this project. I think that some of these meetings have been postponed in the past because of the COVID. And so we're catching up on these. So this is the second public hearing portion for the COVID, uh, project that you had, the initial one. So, um, there is, Nathan, a letter that you have, should be on letterhead for you to sign for me to be able to.
Yes, there is.
Give me consent for this public hearing, so I'll need that as well. I'll start this public hearing. The date is November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. And the time is nine forty-six and we're at the county commissioner's room, City of Washington, Indiana, in Davies County. Meeting was advertised in compliance with Indiana Code IC five dash three dash one. Meeting was advertised in the Washington Times Herald on November the twelfth, twenty twenty. The purpose of the meeting is to provide citizens the opportunity to express their views on community development and housing needs, past community development and housing activities, and the proposed project, which consists of obtaining CDBG grant funds for the COVID nineteen response. The purpose, proposed project included funding support for businesses in Davies County that have been negatively affected by the COVID nineteen pandemic. The estimated total cost of the proposed project is one hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. The grant amount requested is one hundred and sixty thousand, and the local match will be three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and this will come from Davies County's added funds. The estimated costs will include the supporting funds for approved businesses and grant administration. The amount of CDBG funds benefiting low to moderate persons will be a, at eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And that's based on the business completed employee intake documentation. No displacement will or has occurred as a result of this project. At this time, what I would, uh, like to do is, again, open the floor for some comments on the project, just so that we have some understanding of how you felt about the project and, uh, how it, uh, the impact was positive or negative for your, for your region, so, uh, let.
Sir, Brian, would you like to share some of your earlier comments?
Yes, yeah. Um, so thank you very much, Rex. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we were able to fund thirty-two businesses in Davies County, um, each with under twenty employees. So, you know, hitting the mark that we initially identified for ourselves in limiting the applications to those, uh, businesses with thirty employees or less. So, uh, we're very grateful to the county commissioners first and foremost, and certainly to SIDC, we couldn't have done it, uh, without, certainly without the two of you. Um, and I know the businesses that have benefited from this po, program are very grateful too. We've had just an immense response from those businesses in the entire business community. Uh, we're hoping to keep that momentum up, especially as we, especially as we do enter, uh, more of this darker phase, um, and, and in terms of the COVID nineteen pandemic, especially with the phase two funds that we have available. I'm hoping that we're able to, um, sustain those businesses that we've known to, to grow and love, right? Our neighbors, our, our friends, our family, uh, that run these businesses in Davies County and are the backbone of our, um, economy here. So, um, anyway, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the program and would just like to, to say it was, I feel it was a resounding success.
Okay, so any, any, uh, comments from the, uh, commissioners themselves regarding the program?
No, no comments.
Okay, um.
Oh, wait, well, there's a well.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, Tom.
Did a good job.
Thank you. Obviously, the, the funding came through the Office of Community and Rural Affairs, um, state funding, so, uh, to help out with this. And a lot of that came from other programs that basically got put on hold so that they can be able to put the money in for being able to do this. So that is appreciated, obviously, by everyone. So if there are no additional questions or comments at this time, I will close this public hearing at nine fifty AM. And thank each one of you for your support and work. And thank each one of you for your support and work in getting this one completed. Rhonda probably will have some additional closeout forms at a later date, once we get past the initial phase of this.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, we got the CARES Act eighty-nine oh-two resolution. This is the, the, the reallocation, so to speak, of how we were spending the CARES Act funding. And this is going to help us incorporate it into the new process that will give us more flexibility going forward, and put, put more of the decision-making in the council's hand as well, as far as being able to use these funds for a, a variety of areas versus what we're able to now. So this is a resolution we've talked about in the past. Patty or Grant, are there any updates that we need to know today?
No, once we have this resolution signed today, then my office will get that paperwork completed and sent up to IFA by email today, and we hope that'll expedite the money coming back into the county. Then we will follow up with the policies and procedures with the commissioners and council on how to distribute those funds.
Sounds great. Tom, you have any questions?
Nope.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the CARES Act resolution.
Prove it.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner McCracken, I will second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two zero. Okay, next up, got the Combined Dispatch Board.
Nathan, we're gonna table that at this time.
Yes, sounds.
Allison was unable to be here this morning to elaborate on that presentation.
Sounds good, and while we have that up, and I guess we could, might as well do it now versus December, it doesn't matter to me, but with Tom stepping off the board in December, I would, since I started on the dispatch board when, when it started, I will, would be inclined to take Tom's spot once he moves off the board come January one. I've got a lot of the documentation, a lot of the, like Jerry and the team worked on a few years ago, so. It's more of a matter of record, we can, we need a motion in December, we can do that. If Tom, if Mike has a ton of passion to be on there, he can certainly, I probably won't fight him over it, but, but that would be the general go-forward plan. Okay, we'll go ahead and, actually, there was nothing before us today, so we'll just go ahead and move on. Heinz Energy Efficiency Deduction Letter, Mike Heinz is needing a form signed, however, Mike needs to get on site to verify a few things before we can sign that form. So I would entertain a motion to, and Commissioner Taylor's been in contact with Mr. Heinz. So I would entertain a motion to table the Heinz Energy Deduction Letter.
Move.
A motion made by Commissioner McCracken, I will second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes two zero. Okay, next up, we got the Safety Awareness Coronavirus Relief Fund.
This is new information, additional COVID money that's being released. It has a very strict requirements for what it can be used for, it has a short window of opportunity. I have sent the information to the Health Department, EMA, Care's Department. I haven't heard back from all of them yet, but just for you to be aware.
Yeah, with an additional ten percent allocation for communication efforts, about a hundred thousand plus.
Ours would be about a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and specifically for communication type efforts, so.
Well, there's about four or five different bullet points on the criteria of how it can be used, pretty restrictive. And like I said, we have to do it quickly if you're gonna take advantage of that money.
Okay, maybe, okay, yeah, so that those would be the appropriate agencies who could certainly determine what they need.
I'll ask them to review that and to get back with us over some proposals, or bring it back to you.
Okay, let's go ahead and put that on the first meeting in December if we can, and then we'll hear what they have to say. All right, thank you. Okay, next up, got the Davies County Impact Award and Dylan Tourism Award. So is this more just a notification of who they've?
Yes, that came to our attention, and County Health Department and Jamison at the West Boggs both received awards, and that merited.
Oh, I see, yeah, absolutely. So the Davies County Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau have awarded the Davies County Impact Award to the Davies County Health Department. And I'll go ahead and read, read what they have said here. The Davies County Impact Award is a new, new award recognizing an individual or organization that has had the most positive impact on the well-being and quality of life of the citizens in the Davies County community. This year's Impact Award recipient showed tremendous leadership this year during the COVID pandemic. They spent countless hours serving and managing the health and well-being of our citizens in Davies County. So it is awarded to the entire team at the Davies County Health Department, and very appropriately so. Dylan Tourism Award has been awarded to Jamison Hibbs, a colleague of ours out at West Boggs. The Dylan Tourism Award is an award recognizing an individual or organization that has had the most impact on promoting Davies County's amenities through tourism. This year's recipient showed tremendous leadership while promoting the amenities of Davies County during the pandemic. Their efforts have been noticed in improvements and developments at West Boggs. But Jamison and his team, which Phil's, Cornelius serves on that board as well, are doing some amazing things over there. So it's, it's great to see non-government officials recognizing members of our team, and a few people see what they actually are enduring or can go through. And it's, it's just great to see that they're recognized, so. Appreciate them providing us this information and, and giving these two worthy recipients those awards. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, is there anything else on our agenda? Tom, anything else you need to bring up, anything from the audience, ladies, gentlemen? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
Move.
A motion made by Commissioner McCracken, I will second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes two zero, meeting's adjourned. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.